All right.
I'm assuming you've got time and traffic, so go ahead. Paul, the Anderson Township zoning commission meeting for Monday, December twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call roll please.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. DeBaggio?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. All right. The second thing on the agenda was the approval of amendments from the October twenty eighth, uh, for zoning meeting. My understanding, we do not have the rest with three members, so we're going to suspend ours till the December meeting. That brings us to the last thing on the agenda. It's a public hearing of a major adjustment to the plan unit development plan request, case five, eight, two thousand sixteen. PUD major adjustment to the property located southwest corner of Woodruff Road and St. Kerr Lane. Since this is a PUD, we need to do a quasi judicial hearing. I'm going to give you a brief outline of how this works. I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow when hearing and deciding the matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the board of township trustees and then to the court of county police. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only be seen as evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and the criteria of the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear our opinions, just facts. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position may only do so after being sworn in and subject to cross examination. The staff will present the summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be over. At this time, anyone presenting testimony, please stand to see plain to stand. Present testimony?
I'm asked, I'm sorry.
Okay. As you raise your right hand, you swear to affirm that you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to all you got. All right, thank you. We'll now start with the staff report.
Thank you. This is case five, twenty sixteen, PUD. This is a major adjustment to the original PUD. The applicant is Mr. Andy Jones, who's representing Brookstone Homes. And then he is on behalf of the enclave, Woodruff Community Association, who is the property owner. The location is at the southwest corner of St. Kerr Lane and Woodruff Road. And again, the zoning there is B with a PUD overlay. The request is to approve a thirty-two square foot, double-sided combined sale sign. And when we say combined sales, it's multiple realtors on one sign is what we're intending there. The total sign height is nine feet. And this is in addition to a previously installed subdivision sign, which is considered the permanent sign for this subdivision. And that was installed in August of two thousand nineteen. A little bit of history. The case was brought before the zoning commission and approved on June the sixth, two thousand sixteen. The Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission approved the preliminary plan in September of two thousand sixteen. And the record plat was approved on December the twentieth, two thousand eighteen. In twenty, or August of two thousand nineteen, while doing an inspection on that property, it was noted that a permanent subdivision sign, entry sign, had been installed. So we did notify the property owner at that time that no zoning certificate had been issued. And also, at the same time, there were multiple sale signs on that property as well. And then most recently, the thirty-two square foot combined sales sign that's being requested before you tonight has been installed. This is the site in question. Woodruff Road. This is the entry to the subdivision, St. Kerr Lane. This, the subdivision monument sign, the permanent sign, is installed here. And then the other temporary sale sign is installed in this general location. And the whole parcel outlined in red here is open space as part of the PUD. And it's owned by the homeowners association. This is an aerial of the site in question. You see some of the homes that are built in this aerial. There are several more homes that have been or are in a state of construction. And again, this combined sale sign is in this vicinity here. Topography. I'm sure you're aware that crest of the hill is about where the street is, the new street is. There is a decreasing grade on Woodruff Road. Here's the creek, so this is the lowest point. This is the combined sale sign. This was the image that was submitted by the applicant. There are currently three builders in the subdivision, so it was encouraged that they have one sign advertising all three builders. The site plan that was submitted by the applicant. These were site photos taken by staff. This is looking towards St. Kerr Lane. This, St. Kerr Lane is right here. This is the first model home as you come in on this, in the site. So this is looking in the east. This is looking toward the west, looking down Woodruff Road. This is the monuments, the permanent sign. Again, just looking in both directions, just to give you an idea, there are, the surrounding uses are all single family. So staff findings, with the PUD, or since this was a PUD, that is why it's before you tonight as an adjustment to the PUD. At the time when this was approved by the zoning commission, signage wasn't really discussed. So with that, it's implied that signage would be in compliance with the zoning resolution. The freestanding sign that was installed is a permitted sign and is compliant, as long as they get a zoning certificate, which has not been done. The temporary signage is, the size is compliant. The length of display most likely will not be compliant. You are allowed one temporary sign, thirty-two square feet, for a total period of forty-eight days per calendar year. And the applicant has expressed their desire to keep that sign up longer than that. But we don't have an end time of when the sign is intended to be taken down. In other newer subdivisions, we've handled it different ways. There, sometimes we, since the sign is somewhat of a permanent nature material, we have issued a zoning certificate for a permanent sign. And then, once the actual subdivision entry signs are put in, then that sign comes down. So it's, you still only have one sign per property. With the PUD, in some certain situations, that request has been handled at the time when the PUD was heard. Or obviously, the option is to, you know, request an adjustment to the PUD as they are tonight. With, so we discussed the zoning resolution compliance. The size is okay, it's just too lar, or the time period is too long. The other things that we looked at, while the design guidelines are only intended for the commercial areas, we did look at just, you know, examples of guidelines in the other areas of the township. They are combining sale signs, which is a positive. They are reducing sign clutter by combining everything into one. So that is a plus. The concern is just, how long will the sign be there? The other concern is it was installed without permits. And then finally, you know, the other concern would be, what is the intention of the other eight square foot signs? How many, you know, sale signs are intended for this site? Once you drive in the subdivision, there's obviously a for-sale sign on each of the properties. But a question that could be raised is, you know, what is the intent of the frontage along Woodruff Road? Because that's the most visible area. So, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Paul. Let's start down with Commissioner Henson. Questions for staff?
Paul, was the status of the monument sign permitted? They applied?
No. I really don't have an update on the status. It still doesn't have a zoning certificate for it. They were notified in August. And again, we talked to Mr. Jones, well, I talked to a realtor who is representing one of the builders in the subdivision that also who somewhat started this process, made them aware of the issues. And then also talked to Mr. Jones about it. But we still don't have any resolution to it.
Gotcha. With regard to the placement of the sign, it looks like it's maybe six feet off the road. Is it impinging on, is it too close to the right of way?
The requirements are outside the right of way or ten feet from the edge of pavement, whichever is greater. And according to their site plan, it is appropriately placed. There is an edge line here. This is a shoulder for, an apron for the new street. But there is an edge line here, and we did feel like it was back for.
And we're looking at the temporary sign, correct?
Yeah, this sign here. This is our zoning sign. So it would be the sign here.
But the monument sign is?
The monument sign is fine. The monument sign is in a good location.
With your recommendation about the length of time, considering that, you know, they've already, it seems that they've implied that they're not going to use it for forty days or forty-eight days or less. Is there another recommendation that staff might have, sixty days or something as a guidepost?
I would discuss with the applicant how long they would like the sign to be up. I think depending on the sales of the homes, you know, and how fast that goes. So I would discuss that with the applicant.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks. Commissioner DeBaggio?
No questions.
Mr. McBride?
Yeah, some of the questions I get from Paul were already answered. But how long does this sign, I guess, two questions. One, how long has the subdivision entrance sign been up?
We noticed it around August.
Okay. And then, how long has this sign been up?
This sign, I, you'll have to ask the applicant. I'm not sure. I think it was a couple of months. There was some, initially, the realtor came in. Then there was some coordination amongst the three builders to design the sign. The design went up. I don't know, and that's, it took them a while to come in to apply for zoning commission as well. So I don't know.
You can't look at the permit date because they didn't apply for it.
Exactly, yes.
So.
I went, the history from the staff report came through emails. We started emailing about this in August.
And then, do you have any concerns about site distance? I know when you took this picture, you broke pretty far forward. And I understand that the sign may meet the setback. But a little bit of concern about the shape, the height of the sign and the two-lane road coming down the hill.
I didn't see any concerns with site distance. When we took this picture itself, we were, we were standing. But when we pulled out and pulled in, you had to pull out almost to the road to get a clear view anyway because of the hill. But it didn't block our line of sight.
And then lastly, just so everybody's aware, if this wasn't in a PUD, then it would be going in towards zoning appeals and then it would be held in an entirely different set of standards.
That's correct, yes.
Just, thank you. Just one short question. I understand where we're at with the monument sign and the shared builder sign. But Paul, you said something in your report that there's questions also about signs on the lots, which would be traditional. And then is there concern that there will be signs elsewhere, like at the front of the subdivision?
So, I don't know that we have a picture of it. But while we were out there, there was a for-sale sign. I don't think we have a picture.
On an individual lot?
No, it was at the corner of the street of St. Kerr and Woodruff. It was just on the other side of the street here. And there have been signs, the eight square foot signs up along Woodruff. You're allowed an eight square foot sign on the property without permits. That's your typical real estate sign. So that's not an issue on individual properties. But when you start sticking them out along the road frontage, which is in addition to the larger sign, so. And we didn't, you're right, we don't have a picture of the other corner, but that's where the other real estate sign was.
I understand the issue. No more questions.
Paul, this picture here, the scraped earth there, is that the sidewalk that's going in?
So when this was designed, initially, the sidewalk went through here and made a jog. And once the subdivision, the rest of the sidewalks were put in, on the other side of the street, it was also made a funny jog. They removed that sidewalk and brought it to the intersection.
So there will, will it be a crosswalk to the north side that connects to, up near East Dale where it goes to Eight Mile?
Correct, yes. The intention, so instead of the developer building a sidewalk along this portion of Woodruff, they submitted funds in lieu of the sidewalk to contribute to an off.
And they've been in compliance with that part of the?
Yes.
Original PUD?
Yes.
Okay.
The township is, will be responsible for building that. Our bids came in too high this year, but we hope next year to get that installed.
Okay. As far as this being a PUD and the process, and they've been in non-compliance, walk us through what happens as far as removal or fines or litigation? What would?
Well, essentially, it would, it would result in a zoning violation, which we would take to court, to housing court, basically through Hamilton County.
Okay. Anyone else want to come back at staff for anything? All right, at this time, I'd like to invite up the applicant, Mr. Jones. Please speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and affiliation with the case.
My name is Andy Jones. The address is seven two zero three Wooster Pike, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two two seven. I'm only here representing one of the builders, Brookstone Homes. There are two other builders that have lots in the subdivision also. So we just, we had an original sign up, the sign that you see now, and it only had our name on it. It's the same sign we use for the entrance to every single subdivision that we do throughout the city and in northern Kentucky. And at the time, Karen Weber from Star One, who's a real estate agent who represents one of the other builders, was notified by Paul or somebody from his office that, hey, the sign's not in compliance. And at that time, it was suggested that all three builders go on the same sign. So we each didn't have a sign up there. Since that time, I kind of took the lead in filling out the paperwork to get it done. And we had a new sign made that had all three builders on it, instead of just having one.
So do you have anything to do with the monument sign at all?
The entrance to the, no, that's on the developer. We're not the developer.
Paul, did the develop, was the developer contacted about the not getting a certificate for the monument sign?
I believe so, yes. I believe everyone has been in.
And were they invited here tonight?
I don't know that they were invited here tonight.
Okay.
I don't know who, do they get the notices for the homeowners association?
They are running the homeowners association. Somebody in, it's somebody who shares their address. I don't know that it's exactly them. But again, I'm not here representing the developer.
But you can't speak to the temporary sign if we have questions for you?
The temporary sign, yes.
Okay. Well, we'll start with Commissioner Henson.
How long would you like to have the sign up?
We would like to, ideally, we'd like to keep those signs up until we, until we sell the last lot in the subdivision. I'd like to tell you, I mean, obviously, for us, I'd like to say it would be up for two months. But in practicality, it will probably be up for, you know, a year or two until we sell out of the subdivision. Now that there's three builders in the subdivision, I think sales will go quicker than they have previously.
Okay. Commissioner DeBaggio?
Okay. Can you tell me what percentage of the lots in this subdivision are built or under contract at this point in time?
We have built five homes. I believe there are thirty-two homes in the entire subdivision. We have built five of them, a model home. As you can see in the picture, that's our model home. We have a spec house, and then we have three sold houses. I don't know what the other builders have.
They haven't begun to build or break ground yet though, correct?
I believe one of them has. But I'm not in the subdivision. I'm sorry, I'm the business manager, so I'm not out in the field. But yes, I believe they have started breaking ground on one or two other houses.
Okay. I live somewhat in the area and cut through that road on Woodruff every so often. And I remember going by it one day when I noticed the great big sign. And then I also noticed there were a number of little signs, you know, yay big, that are very temporary signs that were out along Woodruff. And I believe they've disappeared. Or you do not plan on keeping those as well, correct?
The small signs for us, that's not something that our company, to my knowledge, has ever used. We've always relied on just the one big sign. Now, if somebody from one of the other builders installed them, I don't know. Typically, the only temporary sign or other sign that we have is just a little sign that's, you know, this big, that just says "model open." And they, they put that out when they, our models are open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from noon to five. Typically, they would just put that out at the driveway and just say "model open." That's the only, and then we do have an on-lot sign that has our name with the lot number on it. But that's typically the only signs. I'm not sure who had the signs up and down. Did you, do you remember the name?
I really don't recall. Okay.
I, I mean, I can speak to Karen Weber, who's, like, who, like I said, who's the real estate agent representing Miranda Homes. And I have a contact for the guy at Schmidt Homes and say, you know, if they're going, if you're going to allow this sign up there, don't stick the small signs up and down the street, certainly. I mean, we're not at, Brookstone Homes isn't opposed to it, because I don't think we use those anyways.
Yeah, I don't think they were yours. But I can't, just thinking of the colors of it, but regardless.
Well, at one time, we were the only ones on that sign, because we paid to have it installed. So they may have put their signs out because our name was on, the only one on the big sign.
Okay. If I'm also recalling, there were also other signs on the other side of St. Kerr. Those are gone now, correct? It's just, everybody's on this one big?
To my knowledge, everybody's on the one big sign.
All right. That's it for me.
Commissioner McBride?
So you all ordered the sign initially? It was your sign?
Yes. We order it from a company called Frontier Signs. We tell them the name of the subdivision. And like I said, we have that sign made for every single subdivision that we, that we do.
That was going to be my next question, is what sign company made that? Because I can't imagine a sign company putting a sign up like this without permitting.
That's typically, I, I've, I've, honestly, I've been asked to get a permit for one of those signs one time in seven years. This is the second time.
Well, typically, the sign company would get it. So that's, I'm really struggling here, because you have two signs that are up, neither of which have permits. Neither of which there's a whole lot of remorse for. And I'm just, I'm really kind of struggling with that. When did this sign go up?
I think it was, I don't know the exact date, but it probably was in May, sometime around that time. Maybe June. Our model home was completed in, sometime in the summertime, May, June, July, sometime in that timeframe. And that's when the sign would have went up.
Do you have any intention of getting a permit for this sign?
If, if we're asked to get a permit for the sign, yes.
We're as to law, so one would think you would do that, right?
If I, I can have the sign company or myself apply for a permit, you know, probably either this week or next week for sure, this being a short week.
Would you take it down until you get your permit?
Would we have the sign taken down if we don't get a permit?
Well, it's up there illegally.
As of right now, no, we would not take the sign down without a permit. We would continue to appeal this case, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Eliff?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. You say there's thirty-two lots. The company that you represent, how many of the thirty-two?
We have sold three.
How many do you control of the thirty-two?
We own six vacant lots and the two that are built on. So we own eight of the thirty, of the thirty-two. Three are sold. We own eight.
Okay. And do you know the breakdown of the other two companies?
No, I don't. That's, would be a question for the developer.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Jones? All right. I noticed that a gentleman came in. Are you planning to address the commission tonight? Okay. This is a PUD quasi judicial. If you'll stand up, I just need to swear you in.
Bill Jones.
Okay, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, to help you out? Okay. At this time, if you'd like to come up, state your name, address, and affiliation.
Bill Jones, seven six one Kingswood Court. And I'm here just because I've watched this for a long time, because I'm right down the hill. And back in the beginning, I guess, I'm curious, because we're talking about a developer, I was under the impression it was Brookstone. Because initially, everything there was Brookstone. Every sign was Brookstone, because I'll drive back in there, kind of watch the progress. I wish I could remember when this started, but I'm sure somebody here knows when this started. But I know there's a lot of lots back there. And initially, in the PUD, which I was, of course, against because of the compactness of the housing, the, it was talked about like, you know, there's this great demand for these, you know, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar homes. And as you just heard, there's not many built back there. And so when you start talking about a sign, till they finish the subdivision back there, I guess, if I, from what I've seen, we're not talking about a year. I know there's different builders back there. But I know that initially, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure you can, for Brookstone. But I know that I thought the first house or two back there was like six hundred thousand, six hundred and some thousand. To my knowledge, the home that Schmidt has is going to be along the lines of maybe two hundred thousand less. So things have dramatically changed, from what I can see. So my concern would be is just, you know, you're talking about, like you say, the sign that it's going to be there for a long time. And building that goes on, because like I said, I'm right down the street. And hopefully, you know, when this went on, you sit back and say, well, you're hopefully not looking at trucks going up and down Woodruff, you know, hauling the dirt, hauling construction for a long period of time. And somebody can tell me when the, when it started. It's been a while.
Sure.
And there really hasn't been anything going on. So I guess, listen, that's why I'm here, is because I saw the sign. I said, well, I want to see, and I saw the zoning hearing. I said, well, I want to see what's going on. Because I'm curious, when you say there's a developer, who's the developer? I mean, is anybody, in other words, it's like, like I said, initially, it was all Brookstone. I was under the impression it was a Brookstone complete operation here.
Okay. Well, you're welcome to ask questions after the meeting to the other Mr. Jones. But our concern tonight is about the signage and how to reconcile what's happened to date, just on the signage, so.
Okay, well, then my, then my, my comment then would be that, from listening to what's going on, because I know the PUD is, was a whole special thing. And I guess I would hate to see where all at once the sign is basically up until everything, every lot is sold. Because in my opinion, there's some lots back there that I look at, and I kind of question how desirable they'll be. So I could envision, if you're going to approve this, you're probably approving it for years, not months.
Okay.
Not a year.
All right.
So that's why, be my comment.
I appreciate that. Thank you. At this time, I will close it. And I'll bring it up to the commission to tell us what you think and, and. Absolutely, I'm sorry, we won't close it.
More questions coming back to the staff.
Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, well, just two questions really. Who is the developer?
So Meyer John was the developer who put in the streets and the infrastructure. According to Mr. Jones, yes.
And then, just, this is just a question. In this picture, the, some of the landscaping, so it gets better and better.
Well, I, I mean, I can't speak there for, I think the signs around the, I'm sorry, the landscaping around the sign, I think those are just perennials that are dormant for the winter. The evergreen trees, that could be a possibility, yes.
So, I think, rest of the comment, I would really like to, I mean, it sounds like, like there are issues with this PUD and when it was cooking off of mine.
Yeah, my, I have concerns that the principal's not here to. Yeah, my, I have concerns that the, the principal's not here to answer our questions.
Or respond to the township's request to get a sign permit since August. The downside was, there is no downside to the applicant, because his sign's already up without a permit.
Okay, so, we don't have an application for an approval of something they haven't applied for, so we're at the point of, in, in my perspective, kicking it back to staff, saying, do your, your, go to your process, and either...
Well, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but, so, the sign that's there, depending on the length of time that they want, the applicant has made it clear that they want it there for, until the lots are sold. We can't issue a zoning certificate for that sign, so that's why it's coming before the zoning commission for an adjustment for the PUD.
But normally, that sign would not have gone up.
Right.
Correct. It shouldn't have gone up without a permit. We put that on even our preliminary, preliminary plan review letters to the county on all new subdivisions, that all signage, sales signs, entry signs, they all need permits. The monument-style sign, we can issue a permit for. It's the right size and in the right location. They just need to show us a site plan and fill out, you know... Yes. So that's very simple. Right. So that one's very simple. We can issue a permit. We cannot issue a zoning certificate for the other one because of the timeframe, and that's why it is here before you.
Okay. Commissioner Henson, do you wanna add anything?
No, just Paul, another, I mean, this is an adjustment to the approved PUD. There are no ramifications for the existing, uh, PUD as approved, right? Our decision tonight doesn't affect, um, the PUD, the site plan itself.
The two thousand sixteen.
Correct. No, it does not. And if there are some deficiencies in landscaping, and if, you know, we would need to follow back up through, uh, follow back up with the, the owner of that property, says Enclave of Woodruff Homeowners Association, is who the property owner states, according to the auditor.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, my kind of initial thoughts are, uh, stick with, you know, give them the sort of, as a bright forty-eight-day temporary signage approval and let it play out. I mean, that's kind of generous.
Especially since they probably eclipsed the, the forty-eight days already.
Correct.
Commissioner DiBaggio?
Um, I appreciate Mr. Andy Jones coming in, trying to represent everybody, but in my personal opinion, this was the job for the developer, not for a builder who happens to be in that development. Um, because there are questions that frankly he cannot answer, nor is it his job to answer it, in my opinion. I would really like to see the developer come and first of all, ask for the permits, as they should have been done in the first place, and we will go from there. I don't think they should be allowed that temporary sign until they get the permits. I mean, I remember very clearly when this all went through. And I know you do too.
Yes.
Um...
It was very contentious.
It was very, and, and, you know, I understand that. I almost feel like they are just flaunting, well, we can do whatever we wanna do. And frankly, that kinda aggravates me. I'm gonna be very honest about it. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, I mean, um, I agree with, with my fellow commissioners that there are questions here that Mr. Jones can't answer. And I would, I guess, judge the conditions, whether or not you'd like to, maybe continue it the next month?
I mean, personally, we've been in this, this predicament a couple other times where someone came in and sort of asked for forgiveness, and then we gave approval. We don't even have them coming in and ask for forgiveness at this point. So... Commissioner Ehl?
Right. Um, I'm reluctantly in favor of it. I am disappointed. I don't think the appropriate representative is here, although I think, uh, Mr. Andy Jones did the best he could. I think he got maybe the short end of the, the short straw or something, and you go. But, um, and I thought it was Brookstone too, so I'm glad you reminded us of that, but I will say, um, it's, my experience is it is common that these signs go, go up illegally, and I don't think it's animus for snubbing the system. I think it's probably just not paying attention, and as Mr. Jones said, I'm not familiar with that. And, you know, the developer, I would say, definitely is familiar with getting the monument signs for the subdivision. Um, yeah, I do see those signs go up a lot, and what it does is it creates an enforcement issue for the staff, because it's not correct that it went up, and it's not correct that you come in after the fact and apply, although I commend them that they are here, at least in some representation here. But if, if we all generally agree, I can probably live with the sign, maybe with some conditions that all these additional nuisance signs don't go up, or that the code officer just goes out and rounds them up if they pop up. It is a common type of sign that you see with a subdivision of this size. So I think if we insisted upon the developer coming in and stuff, the developer probably would come in, but I'm not sure we need to go through all that additional process, um, based on, on this sign. I'm not in favor of allowing it to stay up until the last home is built, because, um, these subdivisions can literally take years to finish, uh, like Mr., uh, Mr. Bill Jones pointed out. Maybe there's that one unpopular lot, and so the signs transition from, hey, here's activity, here's what's going on, to kind of just a advertisement for the passersby. So, um, I'm okay continuing it to see if there's more representation. Uh, I think that's good. But I'm in, that aside, I would be in favor of approving this sign for, say, eighteen months maybe.
Okay. Yeah, I think we probably need to, to separate the issues between the monument sign and the temporary sale, for-sale sign. And, you know, apparently, they did some of their homework, and they were within spec as far as the square footage and the setbacks, but they didn't read the next line about needing a certificate or approval, or just, you know, disregarded that part. So, at this time, I, I would entertain a, a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we, um, consider tabling case five dash two thousand sixteen PUD major adjustment Enclave of Wood, uh, Woodruff, Sand Kerr Lane and Woodruff Road, um, until our December meeting. I would also like to add that we, we would request that the developer be present at the next, at our next meeting when we discuss this. I was just gonna say, and to also have filed for and obtain a permit for that subdivision's on, the permits of the monument sign.
Do you have that? Do I have a second?
I will second.
Please call roll.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. DiBaggio?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ehl?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. All right, that concludes everything that's on the, uh, the agenda. Please, uh, carry our message back, and Paul will also take... Okay.
We, we just wanna say...
All right, well, we'll, thank you. All right, at this time, a motion to adjourn?
Just, uh, just real quick, so our December meeting is on December the sixteenth, which is a week earlier than our normal meeting date because of Christmas. December the sixteenth, it's a week earlier.
Catherine Anne, can you make that meeting? Okay, so we know we have the other meeting notes and tonight's meeting notes.
Right, we will try to make sure we had, that Jonathan or Scott can get here for December too, to approve October minutes and tonight's minutes.
Because you're leaving correctly at the end of December, Catherine?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to have the meetings minutes approved for the other ones. Paul said he might have a small parting gift for you.
You'll have to stay, it sounds like, because the milestone get prepared, you can't go.
Paul, do you have stuff on for December?
So it'd be a, it's more of an administrative, but at this point, they may, or may not come back. Okay, and at this time, I'd like a, a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll be second.
No need to call, I'll adjourn.